I call this meeting of the North Adams City Council to order for January 28, 2025. This meeting is being recorded and can be viewed live on the Northern Berkshire Community Television Station, Channel 1303, and will be posted to their website as soon as possible. We will also be live streaming on YouTube at www.youtube.com/atNorthAdams. Just click on the "Live," then on the 2025.01.28 City Council Meeting. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Blackmer?
Here.
Bona?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Fitch?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Oleskowitz?
Here.
Shade?
Here.
Wilkinson?
Here.
Sapienza?
Here.
Nine Yays.
We have a quorum. And we have Counselor Breen with us remote tonight, so all votes will be roll-call votes. Okay. We'll do the moment of silence. Please rise for a moment of silent remembrance. Tonight, we remember Donna Miller, brother of our very own Counselor Shade, who left us unexpectedly, her mother left us unexpectedly a couple of weeks ago. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. All right. Showtime.
Do you want to stand up here?
We'll stand out front.
Okay. This is the public swearing in of President Sapienza. He was sworn in previously. This is just for the public swearing in. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I?
Aye.
State your name.
Brian Sapienza.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform the duties?
That I will perform the duties.
Of the President of the City Council?
The President of the City Council.
For the City of North Adams.
For the City of North Adams.
Faithfully?
Faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
To the best of my abilities?
To the best of my abilities.
And to follow all Massachusetts regulations.
And to follow all Massachusetts regulations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, approval of minutes. We don't have any minutes this evening. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for National Grid. We have four papers that we're going to be looking at, one which has been withdrawn by National Grid. So at this time, I opened the public hearing, paper number 12,435, a petition from National Grid requesting a public hearing for one jointly owned pole location on East Main Street. Okay, I'm going to file the communication without objection. We have a letter from Mr. Lascarbo on this item, and I am going to read that into the record. January 28, 2025. RE National Grid, petition for joint or identical pole locations to the North Adams City Council. I have reviewed the petition for identical pole locations from National Grid and have inspected the site on East Main Street as described in the petition. I recommend National Grid proceeds with the project as described in the petition number 31006675 submitted to the city clerk. Any questions? Please feel free to call my office, 413-662-3000, extension 3047. Signed Timothy Lascarbo. Cards were mailed to the abutters. Mr. Mike Tatro from National Grid is here in representation of National Grid. Mr. Tatro, would you like to speak in regards to this petition?
We're seeking permission to set up a stub pole at the end of East Main Street.
On East Main Street, there was an old tree guy that was ratted out, so we don't do that anymore. We need to set a pole to anchor the last pole on East Main Street.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Tatro? Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak in regards to this pole location? Counselor Shade?
Yes, just a quick question. The East Main Street, the new proposed location, it looks like the pole is going to be moved from what was previously a good distance before a turn to right on the corner of a turn. Could that present any potential traffic issues?
Oh, that's...
Or visual issues in the road if it's going to be moved closer to a turn?
That's a right-of-way for the end of that road, so it's not really a road. But it's on the edge of the right-of-way. If they ever approve it, there'll be room for the road, and it's, I'm not sure the width of that right-of-way.
So it shouldn't cause any visual impairments for any cars or vehicles?
Oh, no, no. Cars will go underneath it. It's a stub pole with a guy wire over the top.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody, any of the other counselors? Counselor Breen, did you have any questions?
No, I'm out, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing for paper number 12,435. Okay, I'm opening the public hearing for 12,436. This is on a petition from National Grid requesting a public hearing for installation of underground facilities on Ashland Street, starting at the intersection of Ashland and Summer, and continuing about 180 feet. We had a notice earlier today that the public hearing for this project has been pulled by National Grid. Their design team is currently working on updates to this, and they will re-request a hearing once they are ready to resume this project. So, any comments, questions on this one? This is being withdrawn by National Grid. I closed public hearing on 12,436. This is on a petition from National Grid requesting a public hearing for installation of underground facilities on Ashland Street, starting at the intersection of Ashland and Summer, and continuing about 180 feet. We had a notice earlier today that the public hearing for this project has been pulled by National Grid. Their design team is currently working on updates to this, and they will re-request a hearing once they are ready to resume this project. So, any comments, questions on this one? This is being withdrawn by National Grid. Hearing done. I closed public hearing on 12,436. Public hearing for 12,437. I will now open the public hearing. A petition from National Grid requesting a public hearing for one jointly owned pole location on Ashland Street. I'm going to file the communication without objection. I have a letter from Mr. Lascarbo, and I will read that into the record real quick. January 28, 2025, National Grid petition for joint or identical pole locations. I have reviewed the petition for identical pole locations from National Grid and have inspected the site on Ashland Street as described in the petition. I recommend National Grid proceeds with the project as described in the petition 30943849 submitted to the city clerk. Any questions? Please call my office, 413-662-3000, extension 3047. Signed Timothy Lascarbo. And, Mr. Tatro, would you like to pull us in on that one?
That's a temporary pole for the DOT project that's going on on Ashland Street. Other job that was postponed, we're going to get this in place first temporarily, and they'll use that to help feed some of the power in that area until the permanent DOT job is completed.
Thank you. Okay, there were cards mailed to the abutters. Is there anyone from the council? Counselor Wilkinson?
You used some abbreviations there, and it was very vague. I don't understand what you're doing. You're going to put a temporary pole in an existing, existing construction area. Where?
It's right at the intersection of Ashland and Washington Ave, in line with the...
I thought we were at VZ Street.
So that's, that'll be the next one.
The next one, I'm sorry.
It's coming up.
I got ahead of myself, I apologize.
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this matter? Okay, I'm closing the public hearing for 12,437. This time, I'm opening the public hearing for 12,445, a petition from National Grid requesting a public hearing for one SO pole, and could you explain that abbreviation, please?
The SO pole, that's a SO-owned pole, that National Grid owned that pole compared to the JO poles, joint-owned, which are most of the poles, Verizon and National Grid own the poles.
Thank you. Okay, for one SO pole, location on VZ Street. I'm going to file the communication without objection. And again, we have a letter from Mr. Lascarbo on this item, and I will read this into the record. January 28, 2025, National Grid petition for joint or identical pole locations to the city council. I have reviewed the petition for identical pole locations from National Grid and have inspected the site on VZ Street as described in the petition. I recommend National Grid proceeds with the project as described in the petition number 30783111 submitted to the city clerk. Any questions? Please call his office, 413-662-3000, extension 3047. Signed Timothy Lascarbo. And, Mr. Tatro, do you have any information regarding the VZ Street location?
There'll be a new midspan pole to feed the new hotel across the street. We just had to set another pole to get the right angle to bring the power over to the new transformer.
Okay. Any counselors? Any questions? Anybody in the public wish to speak on this? Okay, hearing, no further comments or questions. I will close the public hearing portion of this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Tatro.
Thank you, President.
The last one?
Well, it's going to be the 80...
Right there, 85. Nope.
Nope, 86.
86, there we go. Okay. All right, without objection, council paper, I'm going to move council paper number 12,458 to the front of the meeting, and this is communication number six from Mayor Maxey requesting time. I'm sorry.
Do we skip hearing of visitors before we move on to visitors?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, let's do that. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, hearing of visitors on the agenda. This is an opportunity for the public to speak to the council for two minutes regarding items listed on the agenda. Hearing done. Council paper number 12,458, I'm moving this up without objection. Communication number 86 from Mayor Maxey requesting time to publicly swear firefighter Sean Hayden into service as a lieutenant with the North Adams Fire Department. Do we have a motion? Not yet. Okay. Mayor?
Thank you, President Sapienza. Before we start with this council paper, I'd like to be sure to recognize and congratulate Lieutenant Matt Labonte on his retirement from the fire department effective January 10th. Lieutenant Labonte served the City of North Adams for 32 years. He was a member of the Hazmat team, served as an acting lieutenant with the department starting in 2006, and then was appointed a permanent lieutenant in 2020. Please join me in wishing Matt a happy and healthy retirement and a sincere thank you for his service to the City of North Adams. So with that, provides an opening for a lieutenant in our fire department, and I'd like to call Sean Hayden, Chief LaFave, and Deputy Chief Patno to the council floor. It's a test to see if you can make, it's a booby trap over there. Lieutenant Hayden was appointed as a permanent reserve firefighter in 2009 and then appointed as a full-time firefighter a year later. Lieutenant Hayden is a member of the Western Mass Technical Rescue Team since its inception in 2012. He holds certifications in rope rescue, confined space rescue, trench rescue, and swift water rescue. He was appointed an acting lieutenant in 2022. Tonight, we are honored to appoint firefighter Hayden as a permanent lieutenant in the North Adams Fire Department. Lieutenant Hayden, as you take this oath, I ask that you promise to be concerned for others, that you always have the willingness to help those in need, that you have the strength to bear whatever burdens might be placed upon you, and you have the strength of mind and body to deliver the safety of all of our residents in the City of North Adams. I now ask Clerk Lee Inacio to administer the oath.
Lieutenant Hayden, if you can, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Sean Hayden.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will perform the duties?
That I will perform the duties.
Of my office?
Of my office.
As lieutenant?
As lieutenant.
For the North Adams Fire Department?
For the North Adams Fire Department.
Faithfully?
Faithfully.
Impartially?
Impartially.
Into the best of my abilities?
Into the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you. All right, council. We don't need to fold out this. We don't need to fold out this. Okay. Yeah. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. You too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Congrats.
Thank you, Chief.
And as you folks leave, I want to thank the North Adams Fire Department for their continuing service to our city and their brave dedication to their jobs. Thank you very much. Good night, everybody. Okay. I'm going to call a short recess here just to let everybody rearrange, and then we will get back to business.
Keep in mind that maybe here they can see.
Question of opportunities for improvement referred to the administration with a return date of January 28, 2025. Counselor Fitch?
Yes, thank you. On February 13 of last year, I first presented about this. I presented several different crosswalks that are around downtown North Adams, actually all of North Adams, with some concerns of safety, visibility, and ugliness, if I may say. So what I had suggested or proposed is beautification of them, potentially lighting of them, just trying to think of new ways to brighten these up and make them a little more visible and safe for pedestrians. And so, one thing is in the works now. As of, I believe it was the 16th of December, the Public Arts Commission has approved a new crosswalk painting proposal. It's only eight crosswalks that are around downtown North Adams, but it's a start, it's something. The history of this is that the North Adams Cultural District, which is responsible for arts in general in the cultural district, which is basically downtown North Adams, worked with assets for artists who wrote a grant on our behalf, and we accepted a grant of, I believe it's $10,000 that they achieved for downtown North Adams. And so this enables us to pay four different artists to paint two crosswalks each with the same design. So it's four different designs, but on two different crosswalks around downtown. So this is something that will be happening this year. In fact, the grant states it needs to be enacted by the end of June of this year. So that's coming up soon, and this is something that, thanks to Mayor Maxey and the administration for just being such great partners with this project, they're exploring paint options to ensure that safety, you know, not just visibility, but also safety, and also to ensure that we're picking the right crosswalks around downtown so that they will last, so that they'll be most interesting to people, and, you know, enhance safety the most. So that's kind of the update there. Mayor Maxey, was there anything else that you wanted to say about that?
Thank you, Angela.
Okay, well, thank you as well. I do also just want to say, you know, this is only eight crosswalks. Several of our crosswalks are still not thoroughly painted or not super well-lit. I really admire what the administration did over the last summer of putting the signs out on Main Street, which seemed to really slow traffic, so I just hope that they'll continue to do so. That's all that I have to say about that.
Okay. Any comments? Anybody from the council? Okay, moving on. Council paper number 12,393-2, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams under Chapter 13, Sections 26, 49, and 50. Counselor Blackmer, do you have any updates?
I don't have any updates. I was going to request that we postpone to the second meeting in February, which is February 25th, and in the meantime, I'll make sure I have everything and I get it on the newspaper and get a legal opinion and whatever. We can get it done.
Yeah. Okay, we have a motion to postpone, and a second. Any further discussion? Counselor Breen?
Yes?
Any questions or any comments?
No, I'm out, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, this will be a, this will be a roll-call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yep.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine Yays.
Okay, motion approved. Okay, moving on. Council paper number 12,393-2, an order granting permission for a new jointly owned pole location on East Main Street. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing done. We need, well, actually, we need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Motion to adopt. Or this will be a roll-call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yep.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine Yays.
Motion passes. Council paper number 12,452, communication number 80 from Mayor Maxey recommending the reappointment of Rebecca Chouquette to serve as a member of the Human Services Commission for a term to expire February 1, 2028. Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. This will be a roll-call vote. Thank you.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine Yays.
Council paper number 12,453, communication number 81 from Mayor Maxey recommending the reappointment of Annie Rogers to serve as a member of the Human Services Commission for a term to expire February 1, 2028. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
To adopt.
Okay, roll-call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine Yays.
Motion passes. Okay, council paper number 12,454, communication number 82 from Mayor Maxey recommending the reappointment of Jean LaMere to serve as a member of the Mass Moca Commission for a term to expire February 1, 2028.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second. Roll-call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine Yays.
Council paper number 12,453, communication number 81 from Mayor Maxey recommending the reappointment of Annie Rogers to serve as a member of the Human Services Commission for a term to expire February 1, 2028. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
To adopt.
Okay, roll-call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine Yays.
Motion passes. Okay. Communication number 84 from Mayor Maxey recommending the reappointment of Joanne Hurlbut to serve as a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire January 1, 2028.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll-call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine Yays.
Motion passes. Communication Number 80 from Mayor Maxi recommending the reappointment of Rebecca Choquette to serve as a member of the Human Services Commission for a term to expire February 1st, 2028.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. This will be a roll call vote. Thank you.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olewskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Council Paper Number 12,00453. Communication Number 81 from Mayor Maxi recommending the reappointment of Annie Rogers to serve as a member of the Human Services Commission for a term to expire February 1st, 2028.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second.
To adopt.
Okay, roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olewskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Motion passes. Okay, Council Paper Number 12,00454. Communication Number 82 from Mayor Maxi recommending the reappointment of Jean La Mer to serve as a member of the Mass MoCA Commission for a term to expire February 1st, 2028.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olewskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Council Paper Number 12,00455. Communication Number 83 from Mayor Maxi recommending the reappointment of Gina Puck to serve as a member of the Mass MoCA Commission for a term to expire February 1st, 2028.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olewskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Motion passes. Okay. Communication Number 84 from Mayor Maxi recommending the reappointment of Joanne Harlbut to serve as a member of the Historical Commission for a term to expire January 1st, 2028.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olewskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,00457. Communication Number 85 from Mayor Maxi recommending the appointment of Cassandra Barlow Tucker to serve as a member of the Commission on Disabilities for a term to expire December 1st, 2028.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olewskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Okay, motion passes. Council Paper Number 12,00459. A communication from Vice President Ashley Shade regarding the need to update North Adams' revised ordinances. Chapter 2, Article 26, Sections 2-87 and 2-92 to align with Mass General Law. Chapter 40, A 40A, Section 12. I'm going to file the motion without objection. Counselor, would you like to speak?
Yes, so what this is, is in regards to the Board of Appeals. We currently, the language in our ordinance does not match with the language on MGL, specifically around appointments, and then also, MGL states that the Board of Appeals shall adopt rules that are submitted to the city clerk, which is not in our ordinance and not something that is currently being done. And so, this is a proposal to bring our ordinances in line with Mass General Code and Mass General Law. And I move to send this to general government with a return date of the second meeting of February.
Second.
Question slash point of order?
Yes, Councilor Blackmore?
Do we file the communication and move on to the ordinance and refer that to committee?
Yes, that would be more appropriate to do it that way. Council Paper Number 12,00459. An ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams. Chapter 2, Article 26, Section 2-87 and 2-92.
Move to send to general government with a return date of the second meeting of February.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none? This is a roll call vote.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olewskowitz?
I have a quick question. Did I just miss something? Was there, did you offer up a return date?
Second meeting of February, yes.
Yes. And that was to go to general government?
Correct.
That is correct. So, I suggest the first meeting of March, we still got some other stuff to take care of here. I mean, I thought, wouldn't it be up to me to give a return date? Am I wrong?
It, well, one, we already started voting. It was part of the discussion point.
Even though there wasn't any. But I'm sorry, but I did miss that point at the very end of Counselor Shade's comments that you had a return date, but shouldn't it be up to the Chair of the Committee to do so?
Whatever.
But, just a suggestion. Just a suggestion, if you don't meet, we just don't have minutes and you postpone it. All right.
Thank you.
Any?
While we're in the voting?
So far, Blackmer, Bona, Breen, Fitch, Morrow voted yea. We were on Counselor Olewskowitz.
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
A communication from Vice President Ashley Shade regarding the need to update North Adams' revised ordinances. Chapter 2, Article, I'm going to say that's 20... Article 19. Thank you. And that, former numerals weren't always my strong thing. Section 2-108 and 2-109 to align with MGL. Chapter 90, Section 51E. I'm going to file the motion without objection. Counselor Shade, would you like to speak?
Yes, so this is a proposal, again, in regards to the Airport Commission. This would be to adopt the language as established in MGL. MGL Section 90, Section 51E, gives the city the right to have an airport commission. Our city charter was established before airports were a thing and existed. This provision allowed our city to adopt an airport commission, and therefore, we need to adopt all of the language as is written in that provision and adopt that exact statute. We are receiving other opinions that can be discussed during general government around what we can and can't do, but I believe that we need to align ourselves with what's written in state law. State law should always supersede local law, and our ordinance should reflect that.
Moving on to the ordinance. Council Paper Number 12,00460. An ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the City of North Adams. Chapter 2, Article 19, Section 2-108 and 2-109. Do we have a motion?
I move to send to general government with a return date of the second meeting in February.
Second.
Okay.
Are we just going through the same thing again here?
There's going to be discussion.
Nope. Oh.
I did.
Okay.
But that's up to the Chair to decide. There's other things on the agendas to take care of, so return dates should be up to the Chair to set the date, to come back to council.
You?
Are we in a point of discussion right now?
Yes, we are.
I... Counselor Bona?
I would suggest Counselor Olewskowitz to amend with a different return date.
I'd like to make an amendment to possibly the first meeting in March, because we still have some lengthy stuff to take care of here in this month here.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and we are turning that to the first meeting of March, you said?
Correct.
Okay.
We need to vote on the amendment.
Okay.
True.
This is on the amendment. This is a roll call vote.
Who seconded the amendment part? Okay.
Counselor Bona?
Yeah.
All right. On the amendment, Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Olewskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeas.
Okay, and now we go back to the original motion. Roll call vote, please. Counselor Blackmer?
I was going to say, we need to have discussion before we vote?
We can, yes.
Okay. And who wants to start?
I can. Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead, Mayor.
No, Counselor's pleasure. So, first of all, I did speak to Counselor Shade about this, and it's twofold. We have two, we have an opinion from the city solicitor that was, I believe, requested by Counselor Bona at the last meeting about who should appoint who. So I'd like that to be part of the record. I believe it's been sent to all of the counselors, as well as a copy on your table tonight, as well as a second opinion about pretty much the conflict of interest piece, and appointing people who have ties to the airport or not ties to the airport. Number one, it's been very hard to get people to be on this commission. Secondly, I've learned over the last three years that it's important to have someone with some day-to-day experience with the airport and an active person in the airport. We all probably, if we were to drill down, have some conflict with something, and I think, Counselor Bona, you've recused yourself on several occasions when it comes to second-hand licenses. On the school committee, Mr. Sukie recuses himself with anything to do with transportation. I think even Mr. Breen recused himself on something to do with the tourists. So that's what the conflict of interest law allows us to do as public officials, as committee members, and also do the disclosure form. We've all, I hope, have taken our ethics training and are abiding by that. Why, I applaud Counselor Shade very much for trying to get our ordinances in line. There's a clear opinion from the city solicitor that the charter trumps all of this. I'm not trying to have a power play. I just want to get my job done and work with people who really want to serve and don't have to be put over the coals every time they come through here, which I will say, overall, the council has been very supportive. But I think some of this is a response to some rhetoric of what is going on in the airport, which is being handled by legal, and I think this is just a waste of our time at this point. I have no problem going to general government. I have no problem talking more about this, but I am the mayor. I'd like to appoint the people that I'd like to appoint who can serve the city in the best interest, and I hope that the council overall will support that. Thank you.
Counselor Shade?
Thank you. First, Mayor Maxi, thank you for bringing the appointments forward. It's really important that we have people serve on our boards and commissions, and again, our boards and commissions are voluntary positions. These are just regular members of the public who are coming out to serve on our commissions. And I agree, it's not appropriate to rake people over the coals. It is appropriate, however, to comply with MGL. And the opinion we received tonight from the solicitor goes against an opinion that was received several years ago by the former mayor, Mayor Bernard, in regards to appointments as far as needing council approval. Also, the second opinion that was given is telling us that we don't have the ability to create ordinance changes to essentially say who has power to serve on the commission, to create other requirements. But we changed that last year when we allowed other people from other towns to serve. And so, that opinion would then apply, going backwards based on my opinion, what we did last year wouldn't be valid. So which is it? Is what we did last year valid, or is this valid? They're under the same provision, they're just different types of language. So I would definitely want more clarification on that, and maybe even a second or a different, you know, legal opinion from someone different, because there seems to be conflicts in both of these, based on conflict from three years ago saying that council does require approval. MGL clearly authorized us, as a city, to implement a commission. This implementation of an airport commission happened far later than our charter existed, because airports didn't exist back then, and this provision in MGL is what allows us to have a provision. So do we follow all of it, or do we get to pick and choose based on the solicitor's opinion? It doesn't make sense. The opinions conflict with each other to me, and I think more discussion at general government will be needed and will be helpful in deciding this. I think it would also be a great idea to have a second, separate legal opinion from another source, just because there are historic conflicts based on what KP Law has recommending now versus on what they did a few years ago.
I don't, if I may?
Yes.
And not to get into debate on the floor, I don't disagree, and I look forward to more conversation in general government. The part that really gets me is the implied conflict of interest where no individual has or represents any entity, that da-da-da-da-da. Look, we all have to work together. So my appointees are my appointees, and you've all been very supportive of that thus far. However, I kind of get a little grumpy when we're trying to split hairs over conflicts of interest, when I can probably go around the table and maybe pick out or tease out a conflict that all of you may have. That's why we have the conflict of interest in the disclosure form. So we can beat it up in general government for the next five months if you want, but I just think it's a waste of our time at this point.
Thank you. Counselor, oh, Counselor Bona?
Personally, I would be fine if we didn't have to appoint these, and it was just through the mayor's office, but I do want certainty if that is the case, because while we have KP Law, and if you notice, their letter says "opinion." It's their opinion. They're not saying this is the law. They're saying this is our opinion, and I have a feeling if we listen to the other lawyer, their opinion's going to say something different. So we're going to have two lawyers giving us two different opinions, and...
Just point of reference, I'm sorry, Counselor Bona, you don't want to interrupt, but our lawyer works for us. That lawyer works for whomever.
If I could continue. I get that, and I also have not been a fan of KP Law, because I've caught them in errors before. So I just want, for our certainty, if we don't approve it, that's not on us. We have a solicitor saying we don't have to, and we have a mayor, and that can call back on them. Again, I'm fine not having to approve appointments for the airport commission, and this has nothing to do with the conflict. It's just, if there's appointments we don't have to do, then fine, they don't fall under us, and we can move on. But I'm not sure when we get something that just says "it's my opinion," if that's really saying this is the requirement, but maybe that's just the way lawyers will cover themselves. Thank you.
Counselor Fitch, and then Counselor Blackmer.
Certainly. I was just going to suggest, as a way to kind of state who these folks are when they
I was just going to suggest as a way to kind of state who these folks are when they are coming to us for approval, some sort of a statement or a presentation from the people who are being submitted. I've really struggled over time to vote to approve people that I have no idea who they are, why people wanted them to be appointed, or why the mayor is appointing them. So that's a suggestion just to kind of clarify a little more about that person, what's their background, what are they bringing to the table here.
Thank you. Counselor Blackmer?
Yes, it is a legal opinion and it's only their opinion. And the two readings we got, the second one in particular referenced case law. Yes, they're all opinions. The only way you decide which one is right is you take it to court. And I don't really want to get into a lengthy drawn-out court battle, but I also sometimes feel like people come here looking for, maybe they want to try it in their court of public opinion, or they're looking for, if we have a meeting and we discuss things and it's public record, then I can just see some of that showing up as testimony in a case. And I went to the Mass Municipal Association's, rebranded, renamed in a meeting to Connect 351. While I was there, there's a trade show and there are sponsors and there's people there. There's several different law firms there. And I did take the time to speak to them, just to have a verbal background, to get a background because I know, I deal with the law a lot with what I do and the jobs I've had, but I asked them about this, more so about the appointment, not the other stuff because I hadn't seen the agenda yet. And I got that, I hate to use the word, but basically our charter supersedes/trumps Mass general law. And that was a surprise to me. Not happy with it. I kind of find it odd and where does it end and where does it actually apply? Like, is it criminal law? Can we supersede criminal law? So I understand the confusion over this, but I also, I don't want to get into a lengthy legal battle, but I also want, if we don't have to appoint, I agree with Counselor Bona, but it is what it is. But by referring it, I guess, to general government, you can have some discussions and do what you will and bring it back with any tweaks to the language. I also question when you start adding in these conflicts, well, are we going to add that to the IDEA commission, the historical commission, the planning board? I mean, there's people on the planning board who basically recuse themselves because there's business before them, they represent or they're in competition. So I do worry that in smaller communities like ours, it is hard to find people that are willing to step up, particularly in this day and age where the SJC says that in a public meeting you can say whatever you want to somebody. And I don't want to discourage that. So I guess I'm leaving it at that and I'll let the committee do their work.
Counselor Shade.
Thank you. When reviewing this, you know, I'm not looking to have a power struggle. I'm not looking for lawsuits. I'm looking to prevent lawsuits and making sure that the city is following the law as is required. If lawyers, if there's a case out there that goes to court and the judges rule that the charter supersedes MGL, then the charter supersedes MGL. If it's the opposite, it's the opposite. But essentially, we need to save our taxpayers' money by following the law and making sure that the law is consistent, that our ordinance are consistent with the law, which is why I brought this language forward. As far as the conflict of interest, that was, that point well taken, Counselor Blackmer. Point well taken in regards to other commissions. The reason why I brought it forward on this one, particularly for the airport commission, is because the airport commission has the authority to enter into contracts without approval of the government itself. They run themselves and they can enter into contracts however they see fit without approval of a mayor's office, without approval of city council. They are essentially an independent body once they're appointed into action. And so that's why I brought that forward and we'll have more discussion during general government.
Counselor Leskowitz?
Just a brief comment in support of Counselor Bona's opinion as well. We as a council, what do we base our vote on when we approve these people? We don't have the processes to thoroughly vet someone. We would take into consideration at the mayor's office and the city administrator and council would have these people already vetted. We as a council don't have the means, we're not a government agency or a police department to see any ties that they may have or whatever. I think we pretty much just follow what's thrown in front of us because honestly, we really don't have the processes to vet any of these appointees. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Shade.
I will say in general, I trust the mayor's judgment. This is not a referendum on the mayor's judgment. The reason I'm bringing this forward specifically, the reason why the conflict piece that I brought forward specifically for the airport commission is again, they have autonomy to make their own contracts based on whatever they decide and we don't have the power to oversee that. The mayor's office technically doesn't have the power to oversee that. They enter into contracts, they can do so at will based on whatever they decide. So I do think that a board or a commission like that that can enter into their own contracts should have a higher standard of, a higher standard to appoint people. And that was the whole purpose. It's going to generate that discussion, which is important. Whether or not it goes through, we'll figure that out, but it's generating that discussion. I think it's an important discussion to have so people understand that about the airport commission. And I think it'll be helpful in moving forward.
Okay, Counselor Breen, do you have anything to add?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion to refer this to general government on the first meeting of March. We'll get a roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yet.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, council paper number 12,461, a communication from Vice President Ashley Shade regarding the current parking ban. I'm going to file the motion without objection. Counselor, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you. My proposal here is to change the way the parking ban works. I know that the mayor does not support the changes, but I think it's really important for us to look at how our parking ban is instituted. Personally, I don't believe bans work and I don't believe a ban should be in effect when the roads are clear. But what I proposed was not to eliminate the parking ban altogether, but to essentially say that when the first snow emergency happens, whenever that is, that's when a parking ban would go into effect rather than November 1st. As we've seen over the past few years, climate change has really affected the weather. We don't get snowstorms as early anymore. And while the mayor has graciously and rightly not enforced the parking ban early in November when there's no snow, it shouldn't be at the whims of whoever's, you know, in the executive office to decide, well, maybe we should enforce it or maybe we shouldn't. If there isn't weather events happening, people should have access to the streets that they pay for. These are taxpayer-funded streets. They should have access to park on them so long as it's safe to do so. The proposal still gives the mayor the authority to declare a snow emergency at any time or weather emergency. The parking ban would go into effect after the first one. So if we get a storm in November or December, goes into effect after the first storm. And I also propose to move the parking ban to end it earlier in April, on April 1st, rather than the 15th because typically the weather doesn't extend that long. And again, the power is still there that if a weather event were to occur, the mayor can still declare an emergency and institute the ban during that emergency. So the powers are still there. It just redefines when these things go into effect. The city of Pittsfield only has a parking ban in effect when there is a snow emergency declared. It works well there. I don't see why it couldn't work here.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to the paper. Council paper number 12,461, an ordinance to amend the revised ordinances of the city of North Adams, Chapter 13, Article 5, Section 13-52. Do we have a motion?
Move to send to public safety?
Sir, I would go.
Public service?
Public service.
Public service with a return date of March, first meeting of March?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counselor Bona?
Yeah. It's worthy of discussion. I'm not sure if I would support it. Things like this have come up in the past. I know it's something that you'll hear public talking about it. I think the biggest concern is part of when you set a date for parking bans is it prepares residents to at least have a space ready. And the problem is if you don't give them a start date, they, some of them need to rent spaces, some need to find spaces that are not available on their particular property. So if all of a sudden we get to the third week of November and then we get a snowstorm, you know, and residents would be like, I don't have a spot yet. I gotta wait. I can't get one until December, you know? And then also the way this reads is once the mayor says there's a snow emergency, then that sort of starts it off. Well, remember 1986, was it, or 1987? We had 30 inches on October 4th. So based off this ordinance, it would say that from October 4th on, there would be a snow ban. So the wording would need some adjusting. I think there's something there where we could, just as the mayor can set the date to be end earlier, maybe there's some adjusting there. I do not support the way Pittsfield does it. We have a lot of very narrow streets that the plows have difficulty getting through even on the days. And Adams tried this a few years ago of doing it just when there was snow and it failed because the vehicles didn't move when they were supposed to. And I think plow hit a car or two just trying to get down it. So there's reasons. Again, there's room for discussion. I don't know how far I'll support, but it's worthy of talking about it.
Counselor Fitch?
I'd just speak here as to hear about the impact on the public safety departments and also on the Department of Public Works.
Okay.
Through the chair to the mayor, if I may.
Are you calling, Penny? Yeah, thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm trying to behave tonight. So when the ordinance, the proposal from Counselor Shade came through, you had already had a conversation, I believe, with Chief Bailey. Both the chief and Commissioner Leskaro are opposed to this. We have tried very hard to work with people. Even when the ban is in effect for a snowstorm, we still try to call people and get people to move their cars before we even tow anyone. But by, it's not just about snow. There are oftentimes in the middle of the night, we get ice and we have to go sand. And for example, I'll use Front Street. We sand one half of Front Street and if there's cars parked on the other side, we don't hit that. And then when the cars move, everyone on Front Street calls and says, you didn't sand my street. Well, we couldn't because the cars are there. So you look at Holden Street. If people park going up north Holden Street and we got a freak storm in the middle of the night, it doesn't have to be 10 inches. It could be 2 inches. We still have to plow. We'd be plowing one lane. And then the morning comes and the cars move and then we have to go back. So it just doesn't work. It just doesn't work. I have been very, very cautious about, yes, it goes into November 1st, but we waited and waited and watched the weather until we started ticketing. And so we put notices on people's cars for like three weeks, reminding them the parking ban is in effect. And we really didn't start enforcing it until our first storm was on the horizon. So I understand your point about, you know, it's not really about me, it's about who's in the chair, but I don't think anyone who is in the chair would just make a whimsical decision on, oh, we're going to tow tonight just because we want to. That's not how people in my role operate. And I also think that it's putting more pressure on the police department, on the dispatch to make more calls that are not necessary. And I think it's very difficult for our plow guys who, and gals, we don't have any gals anymore, but who are working diligently to try to get as much cleared as they can quickly and efficiently and most importantly, safely. We try to get messages out as early as we can when we see something coming. As Counselor Bona said, you know, Pittsfield, a little less desirable, their streets. Sorry, Mayor Machetti. Adams, it didn't work. I don't want to be a guinea pig because when my team is out there in the middle of the night, all of you are sleeping and we're wrestling with people to move their cars. It's just not going to work. So thank you.
Counsel Blackmer.
I mean, I could see moving it from November 1st to November 15th, but like the mayor said, it's not always snow anymore, it's ice. And I know the storm that came in over Sunday into Monday of Martin Luther King weekend, we had noticed that we were going to get 3 to 5 inches or 4 to 6, it changed. Saturday night, Sunday morning, it moved to like 8 inches. And the snow was wet and heavy when it started on Sunday afternoon at 2 o'clock. I was seeing, I was hearing about the calls, the people do not move their cars as the mayor has, and she's giving you specific examples. And so I don't think, I think we do need to have this and you never, like you say, you never know. Storms come in and you wake up and there's like 3 inches of snow in your car, which, you know, okay, I gotta wipe it off, but the streets have to be plowed and sanded and salted. The other issue I have is that I'm not a fan of moving it back from the 15th of April because personally, we do get storms. Like last year, it was the first day we canceled school in several of my districts. It was April 4th. So if we'd had it and we would have been fighting with everybody in the city to try and move their cars and like I heard, they end up, dispatch is trying to call people and we don't always have a number. Everybody has a cellphone now. It's not in a, it's not in a list. So I do have concerns about that. I understand that people, this is the biggest complaint. Like, why doesn't, there's not, if you end up buying or renting a house and there's no parking, what do you do? But I think you have to be cognizant of that and when you buy/rent that property to come up with a plan. And I just, I don't want to make it any harder. We've got as many streets as we've always had. We've got fewer people working and I don't want to make it any more complicated. And I do, like the mayor said, there's been years where we've gotten ice storm after ice storm after ice storm and didn't have any measurable snow until February. So that's mine. Obviously, committee will talk about it.
Okay, Counselor Shade.
Thank you. And, you know, these are well-taken points in regards to ice, in regards to different weather events. Perhaps the language needs to be worked from snow to winter weather emergency to cover all of that. The whole point of it was that once the first winter weather emergency was issued, the parking ban would be in effect for any storms after that. So it really wouldn't affect those. It would be similar to what we have now. But the whole point is so that we don't just set an arbitrary random date, which is what November 1st is. It's an arbitrary random date that just doesn't apply the same way that it used to. And so the point is to revisit how that works and to make the streets available for as long as possible to the residents of North Adams to be able to park their vehicles in front of their homes and have easier access to them. So, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, Counselor Breen, did you have any comments?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor.
Counselor Bona?
I'm sorry, Counselor Bona?
Yeah. At this point, I am going to support it just so, you know, I would actually like to hear from, you know, Public Service Commissioner to express how difficult this can be. I mean, at this point, I do not believe, I'm probably going to vote afterwards for changes, but I think sometimes we forget, I mean, the mayor has explained some of it tonight, but how difficult some of these streets can be and the challenges they have to face. So I think it's, it gives them an opportunity and then also to remind the public, like, this is why it is what it is. So thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to send this to Public Services for the return date of March 1st.
First meeting of March.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so I meant first meeting of March. Thank you. And this is a roll call vote, please.
Blackmer?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yet.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Leskowitz?
No.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Sapienza?
No.
We have three nays and six yeses.
Motion passes. Council paper number 12,462, a resolution from Counselor Andrew Fitch and Vice President Ashley Shade in support of the definitions under MGL Chapter 111, 72 GG, which prohibits discrimination against residents on the basis of gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, intersex status or HIV status, long-term care facilities, notice, care for transgender residents, LGBTQI inclusion, programming, rules and regulations and training. I will file the communication without objection. Counselor Fitch, would you like to read your resolution into the, into the record, please?
Yes, certainly. And I would welcome Counselor Ashley Shade, who wrote this with me, to chime in as well and maybe we can share some of the definitions back and forth.
Okay.
So, starting off here, whereas the President of the United States signed executive order titled "Defending Women from Gender Ideology Extremism and Restoring Biological Truth to the Federal Government," and whereas the city of North Adams exists within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and whereas Massachusetts General Law's C1172GG prohibits discrimination against residents on the basis of gender identity or expression, sexual orientation, intersex status or HIV status, long-term care facilities, notice, care for transgender residents, LGBTQI inclusion in programming, rules and regulations, training, and whereas Massachusetts General Law's C1172GG lists the following definitions. First, gender expression, in the manner in which a person represents or expresses gender to others, often through behavior, clothing, hairstyles, activities, voice or mannerisms.
Gender identity or gender, a person's gender identity, appearance or behavior, whether or not that gender identity, appearance or behavior is different from that traditionally associated with the person's physiology or birth sex, provided however, the gender identity may be demonstrated through medical history, care or treatment of the gender identity, consistent and uniform assertion of the gender identity or any other evidence that the gender identity is sincerely held as part of a person's core identity, and provided further, the gender identity shall not be asserted for any improper purpose.
Gender nonconforming, gender expression does not conform to stereotypical expectations of such gender.
Gender transition, a process in which a person begins to live according to that person's gender identity rather than the sex the person was assigned at birth, which may include changing one's clothing, appearance, name or identification documents or undergoing medical treatments.
HIV, human immunodeficiency virus.
Intersex, a person whose sexual or reproductive anatomy or chromosomal pattern is not consistent with typical definitions of male or female.
LGBTQI, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, questioning, queer and intersex.
Long-term care facility staff, all individuals employed by or contracted directly with a long-term care facility.
Non-binary, describes a person whose gender identity falls outside of the traditional gender binary structure of man and woman.
Queer, a person whose gender expression, gender identity or sexual orientation does not conform to dominant expectations or standards.
Questioning, a person who is exploring or unsure about their own sexual- Questioning, a person who is exploring or unsure about their own sexual orientation or gender identity or expression.
Sexual orientation, a person's romantic or sexual attraction to other people.
Transgender, a person whose gender identity or gender expression differs from the birth sex of that person. Now, therefore be it resolved that the North Adams City Council affirms the listed definitions and nature of Massachusetts General Law's C-1172GG, and be it further resolved that the North Adams City Clerk shall send a copy of this signed resolution to Mayor Jennifer Maxey and all City of North Adams Department Heads.
Okay, thank you. All right. Motion on that?
Move to it.
Yes, okay, we need, motion to adopt?
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Counselor Breen?
I'm off that, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor.
Counsel Fitch?
I just, I just wanna state, I hate that we have to bring this up right now. I'm a little emotional about it, but I, I'm glad that we took the time to go through the definitions that we accept here in Massachusetts, and not the contortion of definitions that were put forth in the executive order.
Counsel Shade.
And to add to that, it's really important that we reaffirm that all human beings are human beings, no matter what an executive order tells them. And so, I wanna thank Counsel Fitch for working with me and helping put this together, and it's really important now that we confirm the validity of all people in our community.
Okay, anybody else? Counsel Bona.
Yeah, just for clarity, for those who might be listening, um, often when we've done resolutions in the past, they are usually to be sent to the state to let them know, this is how we feel, and, you know, and they get resolutions throughout the state. Um, but again, this is an affirmation of what the state already has.
Right.
So it's not telling the state to change something, we're just affirming that we accept this. Would that be fair?
Yes, it would be fair.
Thank you.
Counsel Fitch?
I should also state that this in no way is us implying that Mayor Jennifer Maxey or Department Heads are not on board with this. We just wanted to make sure to spread the message to them as well.
Okay, anybody else? And I would just like to say a few words to this, uh, I think what we need to do as a society is just to be respectful to one another, no matter what your background, what your gender identity is. I think it's all a matter, comes down to a matter of respect. You're looking at the person, you're not looking at what they are, you're looking at who they are, and their heart, and their personalities, and I think that's important to remember as we move forward in, in time. And that's all I have. And this is a roll call vote.
Blackmore?
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yes.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Oleskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Abstain. I don't like things shoved down my throat.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Eight yays, zero nays, one abstain.
Okay, motion passes. And we move on to licenses. We have none tonight. Open forum, this is the opportunity for the public to speak to the council for their, for two minutes on issues of municipal significance. And please step up to the mic and name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, hello citizens. My name is Alice Borjanowski. I'm a resident of Tyler Street. Uh, first, I'd like to say thank you to the snowplows. They make it possible for me to live on Tyler Street. I would never wanna drive up that street without the plows. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Number two, Commissioner Blackmore reminded us, connect 351.org. What a great, great, wonderful opportunity. Mass Municipal Association has a ton of information on that website. I got very informed on a lot of different things that have to do with government and also with citizenship. So I'm very excited to see all of those little slide shows from the conference that happened this past weekend. Thank you. Thanks for reminding us. And then number three, I wanted to remind everybody about First Friday Downtown, on February 7th, from 5 to 8. The First Fridays happen every month, they're fabulous. It's the way that I have been able to visit my neighbors and meet other people, and be very proud of our city. Um, Eagle Street looks great, there's brand new galleries on Eagle Street, there are new businesses on Main Street, and I love living here. Thank you for this.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else for open forum? Name an address for the record.
Um, I'm Virginia Rio, 36 Holden Street, and I am, like to speak on two suggestions for the upcoming budget process. And it is, it will be upon us before we know it. My first suggestion is that North Adams has developed and approved the Vision 2030 Comprehensive Plan. This plan provides the strategic framework that is critical to an impactful budget strategy. I would like to suggest that a presentation on the 2030 Plan and the status of the proposed actions be provided to the council and the public as the launch point for the upcoming budget process. This will enable a focus on the outcomes the city is striving to achieve, and that the budget should support. My second suggestion is that the current budget process focuses on the elements funded by property taxes and local receipts as a core, um, and unrestricted state funds. This omits detailed information on federal and restricted state grants. These significantly impact the services and projects that the city can undertake, and I recommend that the budget presentations and materials include information on grants, including source amount, time, period, purpose. This type of presentation was made to the school committee as part of the budget process and was favorably received. In addition to providing a composite picture of city funds, this presentation would showcase the hard work and successes of the mayor and the city staff who have brought this funding to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lillian Zawatski, 441 East Main Street, and I wanted to just share my two cents on a few items, and then tell you what I came up to talk about in the first place. So I just wanted to thank Counsel Shade for bringing up the issue of the appointment to the Airport Commission. Um, I think it's clear that it's unclear whether Mass General Law or the city charter, which has precedent over the other. I think that if that's not clear to the council and to the public...
Pause for just a second. Counsel Breen, we're getting a lot of background noise from your end.
Sorry, I was just trying to hear them on YouTube, because I couldn't hear it on, well, sorry.
Okay. All right, can you speak up a little bit louder, and I'll...
Absolutely. Okay. I'm not hearing any feedback. Yeah, I think, um, what Counsel, what Counsel Blackmore was saying, that the charter supersedes Mass General Law, I think that, um, that's gonna come up in way more instances than just the appointment to the Airport Commission. So I just think that's something that it's really important to clear up. And in addition, um, to what Counselor Oleskowitz was saying, what is the council doing when it is approving appointments? Is it saying, "We trust the judgment of the mayor, great job," in which case, that's fine? Or is it saying, "We agree with this person being appointed to the commission?" And I think whichever it is, it's just kinda good to know which, which one you guys are doing. And when the public is watching, it's good for us to know what you guys are doing. Um, so those are my, just my reactions to the meeting, but I actually came here to talk about, um, a couple months ago, I gave a presentation to the city council about the housing bill that was passed at the state level, and one of the provisions of that housing bill was the accessory dwelling unit law that goes into effect on February 2nd. So as of February 2nd, every single municipality in the state of, in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts will have accessory dwelling units by right. That means basement apartments, backyard apartments, whatever we have written in our local zoning code by right, we will have to allow accessory dwelling units. After I gave my presentation, that was recommended to go back to administration, so A, I was wondering if there was an update on that.
Okay, your time has ended, thank you.
Oh, can I get a couple minutes, 'cause of the interruption?
I did stop the clock, so you did have your two, full two minutes.
Okay, so thank you so much.
You're welcome. Anybody else for open forum? Hearing done, we'll move on. Mayor's updates, mayor?
Sure, Lillian, I'll be happy to talk to you after, but we are working on an ordinance regarding ADUs, so we are on that. Let's start with some fun stuff. Winterfest, Saturday, February 15th, we will be hosting Winterfest in our downtown from 9 to 3. Schedule is in process, but we will have our annual Chowder Cook-Off, which we're trying to entice the city council to put in a Chowder this year, a craft fair, street hockey, storefront activities, bonfire and samurks, horse and buggy, we're trying to have ice skating, depending on the weather, and much more. Also, at the last meeting, I, or I think I sent you all an email about mayor's appointments. And tonight, I just wanted to publicly acknowledge appointing Bill Diamond to the Airport Commission for a term to expire February 1st, 2028. On the council on aging, appointing John A. Blair, Nancy Canales, and Margaret Crittison, and Mary Frances Kearns for a term to expire on 1/1/2030. I can't believe I'm saying that. On the traffic commission, Paul Moriarty and Paul Markland for a term to expire on January 10th, 2028. And on the tree commission, Stephen Betty for a term to expire on January 1st, 2028. I sent you an email saying that I was not going to bring mayor appointments forward, that I was just gonna kinda do my thing, but I really think it's important to step and acknowledge the people who are stepping up to do community service. So therefore, I will resume my normal presentations with mayor appointments at our next meeting for your information only. I think it's very, very important to acknowledge those who are willing to step forward to make North Adams a better place, despite the rhetoric at our last meeting, which I hope we will never have. I wanna make sure we acknowledge those who are willing to help us as we move North Adams forward. Also, we've talked a little bit in passing on the council floor about the youth commission, and I will invite Bane Jacobs, Chair of the Youth Commission, to come to our February 11th meeting to give us an update on the work of the youth commission. I thought you'd all be interested in that. We are in the midst of having a lead pipe survey, as most of you know. You should've received letters in the mail about a question of what type of pipes you have coming into your house. I know that some people have received calls asking to pay for this survey. Please be reminded that this is a scam, that our survey is free, and they should be identifying as a company through tie and bond. Please do not give your credit card information over the phone, and we encourage people to schedule the survey as soon as possible. Also be reminded that the determination of lead pipe has not been made yet, we are still in the assessing process. If you received a letter saying that you have lead pipes and you have to pay X, that also is a scam. It's very sad that we are trying to get through this process, and all these scams are out there. So if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call the Public Service Department or my office. Also, as the year progresses, and as Virginia pointed out, hi, Virginia, budget season is soon upon us, uh, just to get out the good work that all the departments are doing, at every meeting, I'm gonna do a big, brief update on things that each department is working on, more subdivisions. Um, so I'm gonna start tonight with community development, and this may be a little bit repetitive from your community development meeting that you had, but the Community Development Office is working on Phase 3 of the senior center improvements, um, that will include the kitchen, the basement, and hopefully some outdoor space. We are also in the process of doing some design work for a new, but yet smaller parking lot on the north side of the facility, which will probably gear up next summer. Roadwork is always on the horizon in community development. We are currently preparing to go out to bid for Jackson, Hudson, and Herman, and then we will follow up with engineering this year for Beacon, Tremont, and Wesleyan, and then move to the easterly side of the city, most likely East Quincy, Winter, Meadow, and Dover. So we're getting through our neighborhoods. Also, as far as the Blackington Mill, we have completed Phase 1, which was the culverts off of Massachusetts Avenue and Ashton Avenue, which, those roads were closed forever. Um, but we're addressing the final page, phase on Ashton Avenue, which is the potential for a new parking lot, and hopefully that will help us support the reuse of the whole Blackington Mill. In addition to that, the community development is kicking off the remediation grant, the $1.9 million we received, the Brownsville Grant, for the parcel that we took between the Blackington Mill and tourist. Once we get this cleaned up, we hope that it will unlock and make it easier for us to work with our bike path. Also, we have not forgotten about the Mohawk Theater, that's constantly on our mind. We have toured it several times with Mass Development, and are working with Mass Development on some creative ways to get that building restored, or at least to get some more work done through the grant process to make it more attractable. Sullivan School, we're still under negotiations with MOKA. I'm hoping very soon that we will be bringing back a purchase and sales agreement approval to you. The Ashland Street Corridor, which Mr. Tatro from National Grid touched upon a little bit, will be out to bid this summer. It'll be a two-year project, but it will enhance a lot of the sidewalks, street structures in that area to connect to our downtown and support the MCLA community, as well as those neighborhoods. And last but not least, William, in our community development office has been working very hard with Greenagers to start work this summer on the trail at Cascades. So the community development office is very busy with this process, plus all the day-to-day things that they do. So that's just a quick, very quick overview, and we'll see what I have to bring to next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, committee reports in minutes. Seeing none. The days on updates and counselor concerns. Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor, just a quick question. You had recently brought up grants, and thank you to the Community Development Office for doing all of this wonderful work. With the recent executive order from the president, have any of our federal funding grants been disrupted that you know of?
Everything has been frozen. So we have been on the phone for probably the last five days anticipating this. Um, we are in conversations with all of the federal delegation about our programs, but we have been told that things are frozen. So that means, you know, reconnecting communities and all of that work that we're doing. But we are hopeful that the overall freeze will go once everyone gets up to speed. So, we, we are hopeful.
Thank you.
Anybody else for counselor concerns? Counselor Fitch?
Sure, just a couple of community updates, and actually, okay. So a couple things, MMA already came up, Connect 351, a conference that Counselor Lisa Blackmore and I went to. I wrote down a couple little quotes that I heard Governor Healey and Lieutenant Governor Driscoll mention. One of them is that we, you know, in the state of Massachusetts, we are about taking on the tough challenges, we are not about kicking the can down the road. I love that they said that. And another thing, I think you all know that I'm passionate about housing development and our opportunities with that here in the city. They said specifically, "We are asking you all to do more work in housing." I wanted to mention that. Another thing, I just wanna commend Lisa Blackmore for her service to MMA. She's done so much work for that organization and for all of us. Thank you so much for that, and it's a wonderful event. And then, two more quick updates. It was already mentioned, First Friday is coming up. Thank you so much for that. First Friday's theme this month, it's the Third Annual Reincarnation of this theme, is "I Heart North Adams," and I have, I don't know, a few dozen cards here, if anybody wants to express on the back of it afterwards, what do you love about North Adams? This is kind of a Valentine's Day themed event, so we do hope to see you downtown for that. And then, also, I'm happy to announce that the Third Annual Northern Lights Ball, produced by North Adams Pride, is coming up. This is, in my opinion, one of the most fabulous things in town. It's, so this is Saturday, March 1st, I think it's 8:00 PM till about midnight, all three floors of the Elks Hall, packed with not just queer people, but all people in town, just having a wonderful time together, food, entertainment of multiple types, and an opportunity to connect with each other, which I think is really important right now. So you can just Google Northern Lights Ball, check out North Adams Pride's Facebook account, Instagram... Instagram account, to find the tickets, because they are now open. That was it.
Thank you. Counselor Breen, do you have anything?
No, I'm off that, thank you.
Okay. One concern I have is, we've had a storm several days ago, and I noticed that several sidewalks in the city haven't been shoveled. You know, it's the ordinance to get out and shovel as soon as possible, and I urge, if you have a neighbor that's unable to shovel, be a good Samaritan and try to help them out, or if you can, you know, somebody helped me out over the last week when I was sick, I was unable to do it, but the neighborhoods need to work together and make sure everybody's walks are clear, and that's all I have. Counselor Bona?
Yeah, I want to echo off that if I can, through the chair, just a question of the mayor. You know, again, when you came in, we did add a code enforcer, which to me, part of that was going to be to attack some of that. What are we, have we been doing to get these sidewalks clear? Because it's always been an ongoing complaint.
Yeah, it's a hard thing. If we get complaints, we usually call the property owners and ask them, we prompt them. We do have hang tags that we've put on some doors, I can't tell you how many. It's a hard thing. You know, I look at my mother's neighborhood, and her sidewalk is the cleanest, and she's probably the oldest lady on the street, and she would be out there shoveling if she could, and it's tough. It's tough, because you don't want to go and knock on the door of that 80-year-old lady who can't do it, because then you're going to, you know, you're going to do it yourself. So we have been using the hang tags. As complaints come in, we took one, today, we called up to, it was a business, and we called up to the business, and they just hadn't got there yet. We had a residential issue on the side of the, on Furnace Street over the weekend, which we've resolved. It's a tough thing. A lot of people can, and those who can don't. And, you know, we just want everybody just to try to help each other and be safe. So we are using the hang tags, as calls come in, we call out property owner and try to follow through that. Do we need to be a little more strict on it? Probably, but we've got other, lots of other things going on too. So we, again, as the complaints come in, we address them, but we're not going door-to-door and saying, "You shoveled in your sidewalk, and Counselor Shade didn't shovel hers," and that kind of stuff. But if there's a specific area that you're concerned about, please let my office know.
Counselor Shade?
Yes, through the chair to the mayor. Speaking of that, one that I'd like to bring up is the corner of Eagle Street next to the church. There's kind of a slope there when you're walking up it, and it's always covered in ice, especially in the evenings, so it's something for people to be mindful of, and I don't know how that gets iced or cleaned up, but it can be very dangerous.
Okay.
I'm not writing your downtown.
Yep, thank you.
All right, anybody else for liaison updates, counselor concerns? Hearing none. Any correspondence?
Oh, actually, I'd like to, through the chair, mayor, would you like to just say something about DBW and water breaks this week?
Well, you kind of cursed us, because we stopped with water breaks, so, you know, everyone knows it snowed Sunday into Monday, of course, it was a holiday weekend, it was a fast and furious and slippery slope for us, starting on Monday, which was a holiday. We had a series of breaks in the West Shaft Road area that probably continued all the way to Thursday. Some of it was that we had a break on West Shaft Road and sedimentation got into the pump, which caused some things to blow out, others was they're just old piping, but I think we had a total of six to eight breaks within that area within those four days. The team worked around the clock, to the point where we had to say, "No, we can't do anymore," and go home, and I've offered to put people up in the hotel. The residents of that area have been very, very courteous to us, and the team worked tremendously last week. It's just the nature of the beast with an old system and cold weather and things like that. The DPW has done a wonderful job, they've put in countless hours and have never asked for anything, just, "Let's get this fixed, let's get this fixed." And we had a little bit of an argument at 2:00 AM when I said, "Enough's enough, you're going, Tim, send everybody home." And they were like, "But we don't have water yet." I'm like, "Go door-to-door, everybody's up, all the lights are on, and if they need to go to the hotel, we'll make that." So they're very dedicated, very committed, and they're tired this week. They're very tired. So if we missed a sidewalk, I'm sorry, if we missed some stand, I'm sorry, we still have to clean up the downtown, but they're very tired. And with that, working those long hours now comes illness, and wear and tear on their bodies. I mean, when it's, you know, two degrees above zero and you're working in a hole with water, that's not fun. I can't say enough about the team, and, you know, some of the team that has really stepped up into different roles, and even Paul and Tim, it's been a long week for all of us, so I'm sorry if we didn't get some sand out there or whatever, but they're beat, they're beat. And, you know, cookies are welcome at the city yard.
Okay, Counselor Fitch?
Actually, a follow-up question on that, and through, I'm so sorry, Mayor Maxey, through the chair to the mayor. When these breaks happen, how should residents, like, look to see if a break is affecting them?
So, the most efficient way is to call into dispatch. We do not monitor Facebook, so if you have a legitimate complaint, you should call into dispatch. Posting on Facebook and talking amongst yourselves on Facebook does not solve the problem. Sometimes we don't know about it until somebody brings a Facebook post to our attention, I look at Keith, because he's great at sending me stuff. So please, if you have, see something that looks off, just call it in. And the normal protocol is a police officer goes out, takes a look, and then we dispatch accordingly. We are trying to be more sensitive to getting alerts out, but I don't want to, you know, with the 2:00 AM break, I wasn't sending out an alert at 2:00 AM. I think if you noticed, I posted something on the city hall page, and we sent the alert out in the morning, I wasn't going to wake up everyone. And we're really trying to isolate our alerts to the area effects, instead of, you know, blasting everyone, because it gets annoying when you get those alerts all the time. But really, if you see something a little bit strange, call into dispatch. If it's during operating hours, certainly call any of our offices, specifically the city yard or my office. But Facebook isn't a way of reporting to us, unfortunately.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. Anything further? Okay, at this point, I am going to call for a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, this is a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Bona?
Yes.
Breen?
Yeah.
Fitch?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Alaskowitz?
Yes.
Shade?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
Yes.
Sapienza?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned, good night, everybody.